Okay, good morning. It is Monday, January the 8th, 2018. I'm going to call the Potter County District Court's order. There we have Bob Meller who calls those county churches and the notifications. So if you can stand for that and bring state leadership.
Father, we are thankful today for the unique privilege we have of coming before you, recognizing your power and your authority over all our lives. And thank you for the opportunity to bring requests before you, especially that wisdom and leadership from you so as you might be wise and faithful service until the day you return and take your rightful place in government, I believe. But Lord, thank you so very much for this day, for the beauty of it, for the sunshine, and Lord, for all that you're going to do today for us and with us. We are thankful in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. The United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag and the allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
First thing on the agenda is recognition of Bennett's remuneration of 2017. Mr. Stewart, please, if there are any corrections to that? If not, so recognized. Two vouchers to consider and act upon the approval of the annual vouchers processed by county auditor's office to the period of 2017 through January 3rd, 2018. Check numbers 178369 through 178538. Amar transfers 1013 through 1037 and the amount of $1,472.87.
We approve the vouchers as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second on the favor of your right hand. Five and three there. Thank you very much. Number three, insurance report to recognize insurance fund. This is at Chosier here.
Nothing unusual.
Nothing unusual. Okay, thank you. So recognizing questions on that in the court's office? So recognized. Number four, Potter County Tax Office deed approval to consider and act upon corrected deed due to an error in conveyance on property described as 32 feet by 60 feet of nine of lot nine of 10, lot 19, beginning 48 feet west of Murphy's Corner of Nine. Do it in the Sandberg Initiative City of Amarillo. Sherri? Let you explain all that.
Well, our tax attorney sent this to us, Purdue Brandon, and he just asked that we get it re-signed. Evidently, there was something about the title, so we wanted to make sure. This was done back in the early 90s. You remember that.
Who owns this property?
At Sam Silverman.
So it's not ours?
Yeah. And I just now caught it, but it was wrong. I guess I don't know. It's part of the larger parcel that he has, and he had them all combined. And I don't know. I don't know the story.
So does someone review that from our legal team and confirm that? What's the process? I don't have any backup, so I don't have a point of reference.
That's what Purdue Brandon and Terryan looked into it. They just said they told us to.
They just say they fix it and we fix it?
Well, this is the first time that we've had one come back from that far back. Periodically, we do it correctly.
They did a lot of different things.
Yeah.
Because they were different.
Sure. It does happen. And so Sherri, because it is so uncommon, is there a reason they're not here to maybe walk us through the process about why this happened? To give us just a little more detail, because we don't do that often, right? And when we're changing correcting deeds, I would like to think being a little more diligent about that.
I don't know.
I know Sam Silverman very well, and I suspect he probably caught this.
Well, this was a trustee property in the city of Amarillo, resold to Hal Collier, who sold it to Sam Silverman, who bought other parcels around it, combined it. That's the best I know on the background.
So where's this property roughly?
In streets.
Is that somewhere near Washington Park?
No, I'm thinking it's...
Is it a tiered lot?
Yes. I think so. Because Glen and Sandberg is over here.
So in the era that they called it, I would assume that they called it, I don't know, being not the...
All I can tell you is it was an attorney and an attorney. So I would think they would... Because Sam Silverman's an attorney and Terryan's our tax attorney, so.
She would have seen all of that was going on and then just found it.
Sure. It's just nice to have that context, because correcting the deed is you're taking it from someone else to correct it, you know? Because we do this so many...
And it could be a legal description correction.
Right, and it could be something that easy, though, without having context. I'm a little nervous.
They didn't.
She said it actually here was all... That's our honor forever, so.
But the city's already signed off on it.
Yes.
The city.
All right. So we're sure you're pretty confident that the trust, Purdue Brandon.
And it's not real bad. His property wasn't back when it was struck off and it wasn't going to be resold, so.
It could be him one.
On your confidence and view, Grandpa, I move that the approval of the corrected deed to an error in conveyance of property of 32 by 60 of nine, ninth, and 10th lot, 19, Jane.
Beginning?
Beginning west of...
48 feet west of Maggie's Corner.
Wait, Sandberg addition to the city. Second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second on the favor of your right hand. All closed.
And then, second, if you don't mind, I can just have the record show that I've just pending additional information for my opposition. I just think that's good.
Do you want me to say my opinion?
Yeah, anything you can say, I'll just look at it.
Okay. Number five, continuing education. Taxation says, "I would like to announce continuing education rates for the period of 11217 through 123117." And then, you're still there. Tax Office to consider next upon tax refunds for overpaying on taxes. Got a few more this time on it. Yes. This is going to happen no matter what we do. Just tell me here. Okay, motion.
I make a motion that we approve the tax refunds of overpaying on taxes as presented.
Okay, you have a motion and a second on the favor of your right hand. Five, zero. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number seven, Potter County Strategic Plan to Consider Next Upon Establishing the Strategic Planning Team in preparation for next step of Potter County Strategic Planning. Commissioner Moore, you have Kyle. Yes, I have Kyle. We heard him.
Just really give the court a little context as Kyle gets up here. So we had this on the last agenda item, if I remember correctly. It was just a handout about what's next, where are we? You know, this is an initiative we started last year and a contract we signed for a year, a whole year. So I put this on just as a follow-up and all that. Kyle certainly gives context for what's next, but we've had kind of a core working group, if you will, that's got... They were outlined at the beginning of that document. This is definitely not an all-inclusive list, right? Others got pulled in based on the topic. As I've participated in these sessions, they're an hour and a half to two hours at a time, roughly as we start to dive in. Where I think we're now ready to position is around the strategic planning team. And Kyle can give us the difference of what is that like? What, how is that different from the work group to the team? And what will that team be doing? I think PRPC has made the recommendations to keep some continuity between the work group and the team, so you're not starting over. I don't expect really action from the group today unless we're ready to use that to actually establish the team. But I wanted to make sure that you had context for what was next and you had time to think about that.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moore. As you know, I'm Colleen and L. Regional Planning Commission. Strategic planning process has gone pretty well over the last several months. At the beginning, we discussed the fact that we were going to lay down the foundation for strategic planning. Everybody has a different definition of what Road and Bridge is. Everybody has a different definition of what the criminal justice department is doing up here, as well as many different areas. We found seven broad areas, and within each of those seven areas, we broke out several issues that we needed to look at. At the end of that, we ended up with about 50 different topics that we wanted to talk about. So at the beginning, we decided that 10 to 15 of y'all, meeting five times for two hours to discuss 50 separate topics was not the best use of time. And so in order to address that, this working group got put together. That group consisted of Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Vaughn, District Attorney Randall Simms, County Attorney Scott Brumley, County Clerk Julie Smith, County Auditor Kerry Hood, County Facilities Director Mike Hitt. As Commissioner Moore had mentioned along the way, we have added people from the Sheriff's Department or Road and Bridge or the Fire Department as those topics got discussed. So at this point, we've come up with a base definition of what each of these 50 different topics that we've talked about are, as well as some of the challenges associated with that. That document is about 90% complete. It will be issued to that working group for a final review to make sure that the content aligns with what was discussed in our previous meetings. Once that document is approved by that working group, it will then be issued to the full commission as well as the strategic planning team that you defined. Those folks will then have the opportunity to review it and make sure that the definitions in there and the challenges in there really make sense with what the county is facing. And if anything needs to be edited before we move into the strategic planning sessions, we still have the opportunity to do that. The strategic planning sessions will be two different sessions, somewhere between six and eight hours. We're expecting to do those at the end of February. That way, everybody will have plenty of time to review the preparation documents, do their homework, and come in prepared. At the strategic planning session, all of those members, 10 to 15, so that it's a manageable group. We don't want 40 people sitting in an room talking to each other. But 10 to 15 on the strategic planning team will have the opportunity to rank each of those 50 topics that we've talked about. Those rankings from the people sitting around the table will then be averaged and will identify the 10 to 15 most important issues to that strategic planning team. Once those issues are identified, we'll then walk through a process where we define the need. We go into some of the statistics as to why this is the need for the county. Then we'll develop a goal, which is a long-range, probably five- to 10-year-out goal in addressing those needs. And then we'll have objectives that are quantifiable measures that we'll try to attain along the way of maybe the need. At the end of that, we'll then define strategies. There will be a series of strategies for each of the 10 to 15 topics that we talked about. And those strategies are not things that the county is committed to do. They are just suggestions and possibilities that you may take in order to address the needs that we get in there. Each of those strategies will then also have a person sign that would be responsible for the implementation of those strategies if they were to be pursued, as long as well as a series of potential funding strengths that may go in there. We've talked about this in the working group along the way. When you have 50 different topics that we're talking about, 50 different needs, there's going to be a lot of different strategies go in there, so it's not feasible economically to do all of the strategies that end up in the strategic plan. This is a useful document. This is something that the county can pull out anytime you look at something and you say, "This is one of the topics that we're challenged with." You'll then have a definition of several different strategies that you might pursue. So at this juncture, what we're looking at is putting together that strategic planning team. And I think that the strategic planning team, as I mentioned, would be 10 to 15 people. I think some continuity from this working group will be good so that you can carry in the information that's already been discussed. We don't want to recreate the wheel. But I also think the inclusion of more of the elected officials, as well as department heads and people that are all on the ground, also makes it be considered. Another topic to consider whenever you're putting together your strategic planning team is, is this going to be an open session? And if it is, then no problem having enough elected officials that constitute forums. We could post those meetings and go forth. If that's something that you don't want to be done in a public meeting, then we need to cobb his head of the quorum issue. Also, we need to think about availability. We haven't gotten to the point where we've defined the dates that we're going to be doing this. But obviously, the people that are sitting around that table, we want to be available for both of those strategic planning sessions. Are there any questions?
Are those sessions, are they six hours each or a total combined?
Six, eight hours each. So we're looking at somewhere probably between 12 and 16 couple hours. And Judge Tanner has set through one of those strategic planning sessions before, and they are... It's a long day.
It's a swine of this too.
It's a long day, but it's important work. And we do best we can to facilitate that and maximize time as we did with the working group. But like I say, it's a balance between commitment of time and doing the work that needs to be done.
I'd like to hear some comments from the board as well as composition of this strategic planning team.
Personally, I can see three people being included. Myself, a district judge, and a court affairs judge. Sheriff's already in.
Is bother breaking, not bother breaking, saying? And that was a judge who had to have open meetings.
Yeah, that's fun.
I think that would go a long way, because we often get questions around public input, and it would be nice on the agenda, maybe at the end of the day, if there was whatever that six hours looks like, if there was just an open block for public comment kind of reaction so that the public could participate if, you know, we found anything throughout the day. I think about our budget structure, you know, the long days, but at the end, someone is maybe going to say something. I think that definitely goes a long way.
Very good. So on this planning group that you put in the combine for the... We have the place for our outline. About 950. We're looking at certainly an opportunity for the full court.
I think that's feasible.
Well, if you're a good judge, if you don't mind, we can have you just kind of put an initial sketch down, which I think she's already given over here. And we'll put this on the agenda for the next court in preparation for action, because the hardest thing is really to align calendars. That will be the most challenging to find a day or two days with this block at a time once we know whose calendars we need to align.
And one of the things we've done previously in other places that works well is maybe two consecutive Thursdays or two consecutive Tuesdays. That way, you're not committing half a week in a give-and-reach process.
That sounds good.
Thank you so much.
There you go. And so we'll bring this back next time when the goal is yesterday to think. Okay, number eight, Motorola project update and approvals to receive status report on the Motorola radio system project considered for approval. Leasing agreements on two communication towers to be constructed by South Plains Communications and approval for Road and Bridge to perform site work in the tower sites as needed. Dallas, you want to know? In form of everything we have done?
Sure. Last time I was here, I told you that we were trying to get away from American Tower Company. They had the monopoly of all the towers in the area. When we initially reached out to them, the fees that they were going to charge for leasing space on their towers was very high, along with... Along with, they wanted us to remediate their towers, so we put our equipment on. On top of that, we weren't getting the elevation that we wanted on the towers so that we were in an illimmer coverage area for the county. At that time, South Plains offered to build towers as long as we could find, helping find some need to put it on. We have found land. They already got their agreements in place. What you have now is the negotiated lease agreement that South Plains has offered us for rental space on the towers. It has been very helpful and helped me in this setup. As you can see, South Plains, if you remember what the previous amount that American Tower Corporation was charging for the towers compared to South Plains, South Plains has saved us, or saved the county 47.50 a month, plus there's no 4% yearly increase. Plus the remediation that we won't have to do because these are branded towers they're building saves the county an additional $6,400 off that. It is a 30-year lease or 30-year rental agreement, so that process you see on the leases is going to be the same now as it will be 30 years. There's no annual increase in that, so. Additionally, we were asking to get the Commissioner's court's blessing to utilize Road and Bridge to build the road from the paved area out to where the tower site's going to be.
And Road and Bridge said yes?
Yes.
I have a couple of questions that we've just...
Sure.
So... For the contract, I'm going to make sure I'm following this language correctly. So we are leasing, renting, if you will, for $2,500 a month to towers from South Plains Communication?
We are renting a stop on the tower for our radio.
Okay. And then the way the lease is written to me, it looks like they have access to then use our towers.
They are South Plains Communications Towers. They are not our towers.
They are not our towers. So they're their towers and we're just getting the space.
Leasing the tower space.
Yes.
Okay. There's a clause in there. The leasing shall have free access to all lessors' tower and to the leasing's equipment during the lease term. So the way that was written to me, I interpreted that as they were having access to our tower. I don't have to...
It's their tower.
It's their tower.
We were actually just...
We have access to our limited time on their tower.
Okay. The other question I have is, so it's a 30-year lease. Is there a reason we went 30 years out? In my opinion, by 30 years, we're probably looking at a whole different communication system 30 years from now, but I don't know the useful life of the Motorola project.
We've had this radio system well before. I was in for our enforcement for a lot of people. We've monitored the system for so long that it will, it's going to be around for a while. Newer, obviously newer equipment, newer technology will come into account, but that doesn't mean that we can't still utilize that tower for that location.
Still have space.
Yes.
Still have space.
Yes. Space is expensive.
And what about the price point? So it's $2,500 per month, 30 years. This is roughly $1 million, 30 years. That doesn't even account for inflation and what that looks like 30 years from now. Where are we taking these dollars from? All of it. Is that going through us at all and they're just reimbursing? Do you know, Kerry?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
I initially agreed to pay for those monthly costs though, for those tower shops, because that's what they do. And how we do it, then, I don't know.
Yeah.
There's not any inflation. It's going to be the same price for 30 years. It won't increase.
American Tower Corporation. 4%, that's what they're paying for each year.
Okay. So 30 years, $2,500 a month. 911 is paying for it, so Potter County does not need to pull this from any of its...
There's nothing in this radio project at this point to pretend what. It's all being taken care of, even with the 911 district who's agreed to do that. Still got to go to the board. The other part of that is too, is that the money that we have saved by not ordering our equipment until later, we've taken all that interest and drawn that in too, so it's all going to cover all of the expenses, including the more electric to run the electricity to those two towers. So there's nothing that's going to have to be budgeted for coming out. Now, the only thing we will have to do is the utilities. Once we get up in the monthly Excel utility, we don't know what that'll be. And so we get those up and running, we have no idea what that monthly cost.
So are we expecting an interlocal with 911 for 30 years? I don't know if anything like that should be documented. That'll supersede all of us on this court, is my only question for that.
They need, just like you do, it's going to be a documented board meeting, just like all our board meetings are.
Okay, I don't know if that's common, because I'm looking from the accounting side of the house, so.
I think that's why they exist.
Okay. Okay, all right. We just don't do this often, so I'm just trying to dig through all of the steps.
Well, that's part of the problem is that we have gotten somebody on the 911 board now that we can go to them and ask for some... They're giving us almost $5,000. They've got four of the radio guy yet, along with all the other entities that are getting from the radio system. And that's, like I said, that's why you pay that bill, but you're underselling to them to, so it goes back to the industry and connectivity.
Okay, I think that's all the questions on the contract. But you have just a housekeeping question on the radios. I know the constables don't have their radios yet.
Nobody has them.
Nobody.
The only agency that has radios currently is the Fire Department. The rest of them have not been ordered yet, which is partially why we have the interest that's building still.
Okay.
But we haven't included all the ones that we fucking spoke about. Four would be inclusive.
The, everybody, including constables and district attorney's offices, they all, they're all on the list to be ordered when they order ours. It's pointless right now to order their handhelds. They can't be used until the systems turn on. They'd be on a shelf collecting gas.
Okay. And Sebastian, you're ready and willing to do what you have to do to get this done, right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Not a doubt.
Love it.
You still need to paper or something.
All right, who needs to take action?
I move that we approve the lease of three communication towers. We just read about South Plains Communication and approval for Road and Bridge to perform site work at the tower sites as needed.
Okay, have a motion and a second on the favor of your right hand. Five, two. Thank you very much for all your work. All right, number nine, parking garage policy update. To receive a status report on preparation and option of parking garage access policy. Ted and I have batted this round for two weeks now. Actually, Ted came up with the policy that very after the one you said you would. He came around with it, and I had a few problems with it. It was a little bit too general for me. So we've discussed a couple of other options that I really don't know. I'm going to leave it. I'm going to tell you what I know. I'm going to leave it. I'm going to look to y'all with whatever you, the next step is to do. I'm likely to go for you with all the details of what you already know. I'll start with, once upon a time, there was a parking garage, you can go that way. So you'll all know what the plan is. The problem, it's two-fold now, is that when the law enforcement center is ready to be occupied, and that will be March or April this year, that it will be moving out and then we will start with demolition of the current building over here on the site where it is right now. That alone will cause a few parking problems for employees because that place will be off limits for a while, just for the construction and part of that. So everyone will be looking to park behind the district court's building or on the street. Number two of this is that the city has contracted with someone to put up parking meters, and those will be done soon. So anybody parking on the street is going to have to pay. If you do not pay, and you get three tickets, your car will be towed. So the very purpose of this is to appease district judges when they ask me to find a place for jurors to park, because their jurors were going to depart two blocks away in walking to report for jury duty, which is their civic duty, and also it's something that we look to them to do, and we appreciate that. So here we are with these problems that we have right now, that we have 150 spots and only about 60 people are using them. And I've taken them away from the ones who aren't using them every day. And I've taken them away from the ones who aren't using them every day. I know, I'm lively dagger, and I didn't miss my words, I said this is the way it's going to be, just every day, you know, just along. So it's down to this now. So we have the L E, the L E C is going to open, and it's going to be off limits for a while, and it'll be back open for a few parking spots. The city is going to put up meters and the part behind the district course building will still be open for jurors, I hope, and whatever. So I'm looking beyond, what do y'all think we need to do?
Bottom line, we need to do that parking garage.
Yes, we do. How do we, how do we force that?
I think we spoke to our legal patient to try to see if we could open some type of policy that would drive the issue. Kerry, I, I guess the problem is that words verbal or in writing as a policy are not going to get done. That's the problem with what I intend.
It's not.
We could get it, it's not going to get done, we decided to pause the vision part of the garage. We've already said that, we're not doing it.
Let me just, let me just ask that to do that, Ken, just for fast. We have several policies in place right now on different things in the county and no one follows me with. We have a, we have a code for, a dress code for the county, but every office has their own. They do it, they do it their way, and they apply it. So I, I can't really distinguish between a policy for this, because again, people will say, well, that doesn't provide us, we're not going to do that. There's, in other words, there's no enforcement.
Well, it is a unique feature of county government that you have elected officials who formulate their own policies. Really not much you can do about it. My concern is with the parking meters. We are, it's going to be essential that all the people called for jury duty have a space on service lots to park. Otherwise, they're going to be getting either, they're either going to be paying meter fees or they're going to be paying for parking tickets. And so some way or another, it seems like we've got to find a way to get employees off of the service lots, leaving the parking garage. If we're going to do it, if you're talking about gates, barriers, parking attendant's baby, signage, tow trucks. What's your incident? Cost and the rule, so we're still trying mentally to work through this to figure out a better way.
At the very, at the very first meeting we did have with the city, and everybody that was there, including Randall. We talked about the city wanting us to put parks, parking arms, to charge people into our parking lots and amount. And I said, well, I believe that is if you pay for it, the city. And they said, absolutely not, it's your best, I'm not doing that. I mean, they were a hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot. I'm sure, you, you take it, you know, do.
Judge Woodwee? I, I think the lack of a policy is where we were after the last court. So I wouldn't disagree, I think of what, a little bit of what you're wrestling with is how is this policy going to be different than address code policy as an example? And I think that what we're trying to do is listen, respond, react to what the feedback has been given. So some of that initial feedback was security. So we had Jerry from the city of Amarillo come and speak about the security features to help at least make everyone aware around all of the elements to help make sure that everybody's safe, right? So that's the first thing. Then one of the latest things is, well, there's no policy that I can enforce, so I'm, I'm really not doing anything wrong, right from another elected official's act. So I think, I wouldn't disagree, I, I don't feel like that's the golden ticket. As soon as a policy is done, everyone's going to come get the rest of the tickets. I'm certainly not naive to think that's going to happen. I do think if we are going to move forward, especially with the pieces you've talked about, we have to have some type of policy that is documented. So the lack of it doesn't exist.
Well, I think also, maybe in the beginning, there was a lack, and they do not for it, of a, a lack of, of calculating what was actually ongoing, of what needs to happen.
Sure.
So we may not have done a good job of that. I think over the course of the last month or so, we've done a much better job. And I think Judge, you've calculated as far as personal hallways and ensuring that, that message is being put out there. So now, at this juncture, maybe we may be ready to reintroduce that option to our employees and see if there's better utilization of that. But again, and again, the bottom line is, certainly I don't think we need any, uh, on, on all the way construction to ensure that that policy will adhere to. Certainly the bottom line again is elected officials who will be responsible.
Also, we'd reach out to Jerry again for the city, one more time to ask him, Ted and I talked about this, about if there's a way that they can, can monitor and track each permit, how many times in any given week that they can actually use the parking garage. And there is no way they can do that as of yet without a program being installed. That would cost us to install that program. It's not a big amount of money, but still, it's more money that we would have to pay to monitor who else uses the permits on the parking garage. So I don't know, yes.
And I think where we left is to find out what that's going to cost. Just a thought. I think if we can impress upon employees how bad an idea it is to pass a free parking garage. Because when those parking meters go in, the judges want jurors to have a place on the surface lots, and they're going to become most unhappy if they don't. If the employees have lost pass up on their chance of free parking in the parking garage, they may find themselves, at least on jury pool days, putting their card in meter or getting parking tickets. That's just not a good option. If we can convince them, in fact, maybe they will comply. If they have the pressure of that on one end, and the prospect of losing free access to the parking garage, through that monitoring system, maybe they will go.
You know, we talked about that at one time too, I think Caroline, Caroline and I talked about the possibility of giving, of giving the jurors a permit. But the problem, the problem base is that we can never get that back. The city sold it to us specifically, we handed about to the county employees, gave them a number, gave them, this is your number, you can use it, whatever. So Caroline, let me ask you this, the typical juror days are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And how many people are summoned?
Oh, well, we can summon six hundred on a day.
And how many show?
Uh, the most we've had is about two twenty-five, two twenty-five. Uh, the jurors come and part probably earlier than any of the employees. There's a few that we start at seven-thirty, but they're getting there first. So the employees are going to come and find the lot that's full.
And that is our point, yeah.
That if your employees had the permit, they could just go straight to the parking garage and then we all find the, you know, we have these.
And if they pass on the ability to go to the parking garage, they're going to start themselves, please, or back to back.
And the city employees are paying for their own parks, they are.
As, as, as is everybody else around here, all the banks, they don't give their employees free parking, they have to pay for it, or they have to walk two blocks away to park. We got a good deal, we have a really good deal for the employees. And I can't express enough that this is a sweet deal and they need to take it. So. So.
Can we, can we, can we do that and say some people?
Well, I guess so far it's been pretty much a top-down. You will do this. And I guess I'm in on the downside where people tell me that I don't like that as well as having a say in what we should do. Maybe we need to look to employees and ask them, for real, what can we do? How can we get this work? With all the information that we have. Hopefully, it would help make a good decision and use the, use the facility we can. I don't know, it's a difficult situation. I know when we talked about the, about the policy, I just thought, oh my God, how can you write that? And I just, yeah, normally I'd say, it's not going to be, make you mad. But anyway, I think we have to be cognizant of what people are thinking. I've heard an employee saying we were stupid to, to have invested a lot of million dollars in something that was, really it's the city that's.
I've heard that several times.
I don't know, we, we need to.
I'd see that in three years from now.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's easy to say. In hindsight, but it's, we're also, we did make that decision, we were thinking, uh, at some point, we're going to possibly build a new district courts where the sheriff's office is and turn that spot and possibly into a green space, so there'd be less parking. And we needed it, anyway, it's. Just my thoughts.
Mr. Kelly, would you like to?
Oh, you don't want to hear what I have to say. We call all these employees, and if they don't want to use parking lot, it's going to happen in the, in the near future, that they're going to want to use that parking lot. If they refuse to do it and use it now, then we refuse to give them the spots in the future. And I just, I think this is a silly, silly thing to take in place. Employees need, need to know that this is a huge benefit that's going to be in the future, in the future.
So what else? Huge.
I, I think just seeing again, I believe that the whole county understands how better we're going to do it, so.
Okay, so, so we can hope that by today's meeting, we have changed the minds hopefully? And if not, do we come up with a policy, enforcing?
I think if we find out what it costs to monitor parking usage, I don't think it's.
It's about five hundred dollars.
It won't be expensive, but I think we just have to put the word out. That if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. Because for the wisdom of the parking garage itself, you can't put two hundred and fifty jurors and a hundred and fifty employees on surface lots that together hold around two hundred people. And meters are going up on the streets. I just, I just doesn't seem part of it.
Okay, then, so.
Sure, it does?
Oh, yes.
Can I get a parking spot? For when we move out younger? I mean, the one we're going to park when we do, have to come down here for court, those kind of things. If they're going to put up the meters. I mean, that's just a thought. The other thought, and I know it's been, and I'm just kidding on that. The other part is, is the thought of the, that the bank has been parking over in the lot. And I know that I told you that the hotel was telling people they could park this. I wrote one letter to an attorney over there in the parking lot, nobody parked over there since. I figured that's all it takes is one letter. It went back to the office and spread. Uh, as far as I can tell, in the morning, there's not anybody parking over there in the parking lot from the hotel.
I've been watching.
They were, I don't know if somebody said something to them, but I know that I had a friend that stayed there, and he was told that you got the parking garage to the street or you can park the district courts. That has not happened.
So the embassy, embassy is telling people they can park.
That's, that's what he was told. But I haven't seen it since I heard that, I remember, saw them, went over to them on the way. Both of those lots have been cleared up, we've, 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 we've learned a couple of letters over the last.
Ted, do we know for sure where they're going to put the parking meters? Are they going to put them around the corals?
I don't know.
In light of the policy, has the court reached out to some other counties to see what they're doing in, for parking?
Yeah, other counties that's the same size as us or bigger.
Yeah, I understand that, that Lovett County has policy for this. I imagine this is an issue in Dallas County, I mean, there's only parking garages and meter, meter parking there as well, just to. I, with Randall County and the university across the street, I imagine they have the same issues. Be interested to see what they're doing.
And Judge Chalais, I, I heard on the meters, I, I heard they're actually not physical meters going up, they're using some type of system. And I think that's still very fluid, so I certainly don't want to speak on that lane, I'm not on that party.
They can use your card or your phone to, to pay.
Right, I just don't think it's going to be a physical meter that we're used to seeing, I don't think it's an actual device.
Whether it's a meter.
Right, which you have to pay, right, yes.
To our parking, because of construction, that's going to change. When it does.
Okay, so what's our next step? That's the question of the day.
I think we found out what it costs to monitor.
About five hundred. That's where you said the program is five hundred dollars to install that program to monitor how many, that's not. No, he just said five hundred. He's going to give back to you.
I said I'll give you five hundred, she should have done.
So what does that do if you buy a program? Hey, you didn't park.
It just shows, what's going to do, it shows, it shows in, after, so I think the policy stated that if you don't use it so many times in two weeks, we take it away.
It doesn't take the card with it.
Yeah.
So it's not just make it.
We've already, we've already basically done that. I mean, I'm hoping that by two days discussion, people will say, no, I'll take mine back. So you give them back.
The draft that was going to happen. Was prepared for. If you have to use it, I think it would be twenty-four, that, twenty-four working, it's kind of sixty counts in three, it should be about twenty-four. So forty, or forty work conditions, use the parking, that's a true advantage. Whatever, that's a theory, but even if they use that, unless it used to be, now we use it. If you don't do that, it's a dealist. Down the road, it can be sorry, you just don't, we don't want that to happen.
Well, Judge, can we, you know, after discussion for today, can we let this settle for, for just a little bit, kind of monitor? I think it's on all of our radars, so it, it can come back very quickly without a lot of background and context. And I, I do think we'll have to continue to monitor that in that parking garage. I mean, we, we got interviewed from the news outlet, I, I remember a long time ago, when we were, we saw some original capital projects of sixteen million, if I remember correct, for a parking structure. And now considering what will happen by 2019, which sounded very far away at that point in time, and it will look very different.
I think we can push it back, I think we need to table, we need to table the, with, certainly with the, with the, with the decision.
Right, I think that's fair.
Okay, all right, so no action taken then. Number ten, donation sheriff's office to certify the receipt of one hundred dollar donation to the K nine unit to set a general fund budget for the sheriff's office.
We have veterinary that sent us a check to use for our K nine, and we do not use them, so it's, it's not a conflict. We just send it to the sheriff's office and I don't know where to put it, but we're going to bring it up. We'll, we'll use it for just strictly the dog, the dog food or whatever.
I make a motion that we accept the donation of a hundred dollars for the K nine unit to be set aside, general fund budget for the sheriff's office.
I have a motion, it's not going to happen.
You need to say anywhere where you made the donation.
Did that step? All right, number eleven, formal proposal one-one-five-one-dash-one-seven voice services to consider and act upon the warning. Formal proposal one-one-five-seven-dash-one-seven voice services to the highest and highest respondent at West Communications Center, investigated in 2017 to 2018. Brandon? Brandon?
All right.
Good.
Um, yeah, we put this out for our paper, our voice services. And we have, um, we have a couple of, I think one still.
That's a favor, favor. Continue, we had two, two vendors, A may tech tone, I place communications. It was evaluated on your criteria that we already put on the official report report. And, uh, Brandon had some individuals, um, his behalf. And of course, the committee was also myself and Kerry Hood and all the teams. So my recommendation, and this is gonna lead to more conversation about it, was to go ahead and recommend its past locations.
Right, yeah. And that's a big part of why we decided to go again. They're still in place, we don't have to change anything over. Um, and are lowering our costs. They're gonna lay more funding, which is good. So, I mean, kind of reduction in costs is a, is a pretty good thing, so. And, uh, we're very comfortable with the level of service we give them. It's always been really good, uh, very short, if we have issues, very short. You know, none of the issues with their service, we're gonna help you get from there. Yeah, that's our, that's our follow-up.
I hope the timing is good on this contract, because we will be making some substantial changes because of law enforcement that we're making at landowners.
I'm, I'm sure that I think for more than just my office, but the people in this building are having a major problem with phones. And we have talked about that, and I know it's something that you can do that if we needed to hardwire this building, and we should have done that, and we didn't. Yeah, um, so we, and I, I don't think anything's gonna help, nothing's gonna help.
Not really, we're gonna stream wire it all over the place.
I mean, Shannon's is so bad, she can only hear if she's listening.
Which makes me think it's the phone, it's not the wiring, I think it's the phone.
Nobody replaced the phone, then it'll work, I don't know.
Yeah, that's the thing, I'm, I'm not sure on that. We can, we can look some more, I, that's what we can keep coming to, but if we replace the phone, I know it puts it on hand. Just twice, yeah, exactly. Um, we're still looking at some options.
Okay, okay. All right.
I make a motion that we approve the formal proposal eleven fifty-one dash seventeen, voice services to the highest evaluated respondent pathways communication.
Have a motion and a second on favor.
Thank you, and, uh, Judge, the contract has, but we are looking at my, I'm still.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay.
Oh, that contract, we need to do the three modifications, and I just wanted that example in the, in the actual package. My patients are very, very.
Yes.
All right, number twelve, formal bid award two seven five four, formal bid number one one five two. Next one, seven, HVAC services to lowest responseive vendor, Allen's Tri-State Mechanical.
Okay, uh, this is a, a word for formal bid, like you said, one fifty-two dash one seven. Uh, it was evaluated on price, uh, is best responsive, lowest debt. The cost per hour for, uh, Allen's was seventy-one opposed to TD and West Tech. I do know the, um, I listed with, um, facilities about how often do we use overtime? And what percent of the time do you use straight time to break your time? So that's for the low bid to responsive, um, came into place. So correct the nation for purchasing is to make the award to Allen's. Mike, you have your own thing?
I feel like we, I hear them more than any other vendor, just, just because of some of our needs that we think every day.
We've got a contract, Sam Moss, I don't think about that.
And I missed our holidays, I really wanted to come here, but we saw holiday, January one, July, Thanksgiving, so much different than it is.
And we make a motion that we approve formal bid eleven fifty-two dash seventeen for HVAC services to the lowest and best responsive vendor, vendor, Allen's Tri-State Mechanical. I have a motion and a second on favor, right here. Five zero, thank you very much. Number thirteen, formal bid to consider next on falling eight, allow the purchasing agent to open single bid responses for formal bid number one one five three one seven, funding services. And we need to do it all through the.
I was glad to ask to get Chris, he has the actually.
Okay.
In his possession, we need to go and open that and look at, um, see what the prices are, and then we come back.
Okay. Okay, oh, okay. These are the motions, we have a motion.
Move that we allow the purchasing agent to open the single bid response for formal bid eleven fifty-three dash seventeen, funding services.
I have a motion and a second to allow the purchasing agent to open the single bid. All favoration, right here. Five zero. Okay, we do want, uh, okay, Department Adams, number fourteen, you sit next to the following Department Adams. Elections, no hiring number Gregory Slater as part-time deputy clerk as replacement for Monica Almador effective January eighth, twenty eighteen.
I know that we approved the following Department Adams as one out of two.
I have a motion and a second on favor, right here. Five zero, thank you very much. Mike, our county projects.
The, uh, vehicle maintenance garage, the substantial completion on it, uh, as you recall, was November twenty ninth. We pulled a punch list on that project December the sixth and seventh. We did find some critical issues on it, we've been working with Western Builders in order to correct these issues. Uh, one of them is the exterior south wall of the building. Uh, it's a Alliance building product, uh, it's got a twenty-five year warranty on it. During the inspection, we noticed that the bottom three or four inches of metal panels is already rusted. So Western is working with Alliance on this right now to get that, uh, corrected. Like I explained to the general contractor, we will not accept it unless they are replaced. So they're working on that. Three issue, within the building, we had some cracking on the concrete, there are several issues out there. Uh, does not miss with the integrity of the structure, everything is still good. Uh, worked out, dealt with Western Builders, who were, uh, they will come in and actually put down a product on stone hard, it's like to use a helicopter. We love to use this in some tire stations in the past, it's an excellent company, that's a gold for. Western Builders will pay to put that product down. I will pay to have the original, uh, material that was put down, I will pay to have it removed. It's not really their responsibility to do that. The original product that, uh, was called to be put on the floor to clear cover ceiling, uh, it's not what it was. So we'll be looking at the architect to take those fees out, or take that cost out of his fees on what we still have him. Uh, so the stone hard product, here's where we stand on the vehicle maintenance garage, uh, on January the seventeenth, they will be on site. They come out of Dallas and they're gonna put this product down. They'll go through, deblast the concrete floor, prep it, get it ready, institute co application. Once they finish the vehicle maintenance garage, they will proceed over into the law enforcement center. We have a garage over there, there's electrical rooms as well, that will be a part of that product. Total completion on all that is around January twenty-sixth. They have all that done. So after that point there, knowing that everything's good, then, uh, we can start looking at moving. If the sheriff chooses to add it into the vehicle maintenance garage to start getting it ready to wash and dry. The law enforcement center, the substantial completion on it is January the twenty-eighth. Here recently, I gave them eight additional days due to some concrete that the civil engineer left off on some of the exterior work out there. Uh, so your new substantial on it is February the fifth. We have a lot happening here toward the end of the month out there. We've got a lot of furnishings coming in, dispatch furniture comes in, I believe it's around the twenty-second. IT racks come in, they start going in, lockers, everything is starting to come together with this project. So, uh, probably between now and around February twenty-second, and, uh, we'll, what we'll do is we'll pull the punch list on the project. We'd actually have this labeled for the end of January, but, uh, we might get the first Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, February. That'll kind of be six, seventh, and the eighth, uh, after we complete that, but it could be able to establish some issues to complete work if there's any deficiencies. But like I said, it'll all start coming together at that time. Furniture goes in on the twenty-second of February, uh, dedication, as we know right now, is the first Wednesday of March. Then the additional side that, uh, certain members of the court did approve for us to look at, has permission to proceed forth. The cost, the amount that y'all had threw, I believe was nearly seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, since then, we went back and, uh, actually, the costs come in, eighty thousand plus the one we had originally anticipated. The sheriff is still value engineering some of the scopes of work out there to do to see if we can continue to get that cost down. So we'll be working on that, hopefully by the first of next week, I'll be issuing the PR in order to proceed forth with that work. If all of the scopes of work were done on the additional part, around the February fifth date, the new date to complete the project for which does not affect moving into the building, uh, would be. We spent the money like we were allowed to in order to complete the overall project. That's to come downtown, tear this building down over here, do remediation on it. I was talking about parking over there a while ago, just to make you aware, once we finish the demolition on this, uh, the committee is not gonna just leave it there a lot out there. It's gonna be five, uh, five to park. What I've got planned is going to over there, actually, raise the size, put in, most economical way, we'll put in landscape. And we'll actually put up allers going around and protect it so nobody can pull onto the property and park. But it'll still, they'll still have access to the area in order to go out there, pick nick water if they wanna do this.
But there will be some parking, like there is now.
You, the parking that you, you know, we finished that lot over there, the only parking that will be, it'll be the west half of the city block. We'll raise that entire east half of that city block, even down where the sheriff parks will be able to call that.
Mike, you mentioned that first weekend in March, that first Wednesday in March, and what was that date for?
Uh, that's the anticipated dedication for the facility up there.
Okay, do you have a tentative time or anything?
The sheriff, sheriff's working on this right now, on your fifth or ten o'clock in the morning, twelve or two.
The fifth or the seventh? A tentative. Thank you.
It'll be more.
Yeah. Don't hold it forever. Okay, um, they are back from opening the bid, uh.
Uh, the bid currently came in at seventy-one dollars, cost per hour. Uh, cost overtime, eleven, oh, six fifty, and the cost per hour for holiday, one oh six fifty. And material is forty percent markup and maximum performance time is four hours, which means our expectations. This is the same pricing that we're getting currently in this budget here, so, um, this would be through two thousand nineteen. For two nineteen to two thousand twenty, they're going up to seventy-three dollars. And then next, uh, final three, uh, we know three would be also seventy-three dollars. So as a participant agent, I have the recommendation that we go with, uh, Allen's Tri-State Mechanical.
Okay, is this, is this just a year by year?
We actually have, once we do it a year, we, we have two options available, so we have the options. So after this, this particular one, starting in February one, two thousand eighteen, the date three thirty first, two nineteen. And then after that year, I'll come back to court to, um, to ask for the second.
Okay. Any questions?
Know that, uh, the, the, which is a recommendation, which is, is of Alan's trying to account.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on favor, right here. Five zero, thank you very much, thanks, we keep. Uh, jail report, number sixteen, we have five hundred and seventy-two individuals in our jail, eighty-nine of those are female, none other than children. Eighty-seven percent are felons, ten percent are non-estimators. County insurance side of it?
Yes, I do, I have one for, it happened on December twenty-ninth, two thousand seventeen. It was an auto theft, it was a two thousand sixteen Dodge Ram, uh, changing lanes and hit another vehicle. It, it did damage, I bet they don't have a dollar now yet, we'll give the adjuster out there for the, the car. We've got to call in to the auto theft to see if we're gonna be fixing, um, the Dodge Ram. In, in the pictures that I saw, it didn't look like it was in damage. I don't see that being fixed, but I don't know that for sure. This will be a picture to play with, with our, because it wasn't.
And was that a, I don't know, it was grand dollars in some of that auto theft, is that, is that the grand purchase or is that counted as a purchase?
Still.
Sure, yeah, I was just trying to understand the original purchase of that.
All right, subject session, number one, um, next agenda, Adams. And also, I have been talking to, um, in the end, about the second day of our following phase. Um, there's gonna be some changes maybe that I think, or about how it will be, with, uh, a lot of us, the people here are seeing it, so, um, we're gonna do some changes on that. Anything else? Yes. Okay.
This is not the new agenda. But legislative exchange, section three, we have.
I'm doing, I'm doing my little bunch of, I don't, excited to be there, to come to this, for all the positions and partners, the legislative exchange, always coming up in the next years.
Anybody say?
All right, is there anything else? Anybody else? Okay. Oh, Thursday, yes, it's not, thank you. Um, the payroll, payroll meeting is gonna change Thursday morning at nine o'clock, I hear you. So, um, that will, it'll pick up, but it's gonna be this round, so. Is that all? We are adjourned, thank you very much.